All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I would first like to call to order the Board of Public Works and also say please rise for the posting of colors. All right, thank you. First off, I'd like to welcome our two new citizen members. We have a new layout for the Board of Public Works and we'd like to welcome Robbie Robrain and Michael Johnson. And let's get into it. So first item we have is the approval of the minutes from our meeting on April 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, T-Mobile Water Tower Cellular Lease Agreement with a presentation by Ruth Miller.
Thank you, good evening. Welcome Robbie, welcome Michael, it's good to have you here. Tonight we're here to request approval of an amendment to a lease agreement with T-Mobile for rental of space on the Summit Drive Water Tower. This is a renewal of a lease that is currently in place. This original lease was signed in the year 2000 and is set to expire on September 11th, 2020. At that time, all renewal periods will be exhausted. This lease amendment proposes that upon expiration of the current term, the lease will automatically be renewed for five separate consecutive additional periods of five years each. The rent will increase from $26,000 per year to $33,000 per year with an annual escalator of 3% per year for the remainder of the lease. All other terms and conditions of the current lease will remain in full force and effect. We are recommending approval of this lease agreement. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ruth?
Just one, I know I called Ruth, but seeing here that it's due September 11th, 2020, is reason, can you explain to the reason why we're doing it so early?
Sure John, no problem, and thank you for calling earlier. T-Mobile actually approached us to start the negotiations. The negotiation process sometimes can take several months to up to a year, so they wanted to make sure that the lease was fully ready to go when this lease expires in 2020.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion as second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Ruth.
Thank you.
With that being said, I adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks Andrew, I'd like to call to order the Common Council Meeting for Monday, May 20th, 2019. Recognize that we're waiting for a couple of the aldermen to come up, sorry guys, I jumped a little ahead of you. Thank you guys.
Thanks Stephanie. I'd like to address items number one and two. Item number one being the West Bend Police Department Police Officer Awards, as well as item number two, recognizing Crossing Guard Diane Brundle for 50 years of service. We have a presentation by some of our finest.
Good evening. The first call up, Police Officer John Addy. John? On June 3rd, 2018, Officer Addy was assisting the Detective Bureau in locating an armed robbery suspect who was actively evading law enforcement. John checked several residents, and where many officers may have called that an assignment, decided not to give up, checked some other residents and ultimately gained permission to search residents where he believed the suspect was, even though it was adamantly denied by the resident. John got permission to search and of course, found the suspect hiding in a closet and the gun used in the crime hidden in a secret compartment in a bed in the house. John's excellent investigatory work and more importantly, his determination led to a dangerous criminal being taken off the street and held accountable for his crimes. Excellent work John. I'd like to call dispatcher Kim Wendleborn. I'm sorry, I should have announced, John received the Meritorious Service Award. Also receiving the Meritorious Service Award tonight is dispatcher Kim Wendleborn. Kim has been the West Bend Police Department's Red Cross Blood Drive Community Coordinator since September of 2014. Over the last five years, Kim has organized 10 blood drives, scheduled 455 blood donors, many of them city employees, and played a significant role in the collection of over 450 units of blood. The Red Cross recently recognized Kim's efforts and estimated her work has resulted in 1,000, over 1,350 lives saved. Kim, you're commended for organizing the city's blood drives and continue to be committed to saving lives. Lieutenant Matt Rollinger. In 2009, Lieutenant Rollinger proposed and strongly advocated for the creation of the West Bend Police Department Honor Guard, the unit you saw here tonight. Matt, upon receiving blessing from the chief, educated himself on the Honor Guard protocols and formed the department's first official Honor Guard team. Since its inception, the Honor Guard has participated in every Washington County Memorial and Veterans Day ceremony, every city parade, posted the flags at many common council meetings and various high-profile public events. And unfortunately, an honor that they take very seriously, our unit has attended numerous funerals of active and retired police officers, including this morning in the city of Appleton for our fallen firefighter. West Bend Honor Guard under Lieutenant Rollinger's leadership has also played a very active role alongside the state Honor Guard units at far too many funerals for the officers killed in the line of duty throughout our state. Additionally, Matt's commitment to law enforcement has led him to participate in the Police Unity Tour every year since 2008. The tour, a 300-mile bicycle ride from New York to the Police Memorial in Washington, DC, is organized to honor police officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Matt has helped organize the Wisconsin Unity Tour each year, including this year where he organized nearly 60 law enforcement-related riders to ride. Over these past 12 years, Matt has had a significant role in raising over $1 million for the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum to ensure the nation will forever honor the over 20,000 law enforcement officers that have given their lives protecting their community. Matt, you're commended for both your leadership and your organizational skills for organizing our Honor Guard and continuing to advocate strongly for the profession of law enforcement. Nice work. Officer Josh Seifert. Officer Seifert is receiving our Life Saving Medal tonight. On June 5th, 2018, Officer Seifert responded to the report of a 37-year-old man who had collapsed in front of his wife and young daughter after working out in the yard. Officer Seifert followed the man unresponsive and not breathing. He immediately began performing CPR until relieved by the West Bend Fire Department. The man was transported to the hospital and has since recovered. The doctors treating the man commented that the quick action and quality of CPR performed by Officer Seifert clearly made the difference in the outcome of this medical event. Josh, you're commended for your quick and effective actions in saving a life. Nice work. Our second Life Saving Medal tonight goes to Officer Trevor Heinecke. Trevor? On January 9th of this year, Officer Heinecke heard a report of a 61-year-old man who had collapsed and was not breathing. While not the assigned officer, Officer Heinecke realized he was closer and responded to the scene to find the man's wife performing CPR on her unresponsive husband. Officer Heinecke took over and performed chest compressions until West Bend Fire arrived and assumed care. West Bend Fire was able to revive the man who survived this medical event. Officer Heinecke's quick actions clearly contributed to the ability of the West Bend team to save this man's life. Nice work Trevor. Officers Kyle McMullin and Chad Kohler. Also receiving Life Saving Medals tonight are Officer McMullin and Officer Kohler. On March 27th of 2019, Officers McMullin and Kohler overheard a call just outside the city limits for a 24-year-old man not breathing. The officers and a Washington County deputy located the man unresponsive in an upstairs bedroom and immediately began life-saving measures. This included CPR, administration of Narcan, and preparing to utilize the AED. The officers continued performing CPR until West Bend Fire arrived, who determined the man had already regained a pulse and was responding to the officers' life-saving actions. The man was transported to the hospital and has since fully recovered. Officers McMullin and Kohler's actions played a significant role in saving this young man's life. Nice job. Our final award tonight is a very special award, Crossing Guard Diane Brundle. Diane? I'll listen to this one closely, please. In April of this year, Diane celebrated her 50th, that's 5-0, year with the West Bend Police Department Crossing Guard Unit. Since 1969, Diane has stood her post mainly at Green Tree and Park Avenue, in the morning, in the night, the rain, sleet, snow, hot weather, cold weather, all those days that we didn't want to be outside, Diane was there making sure 50 years of students got safely to school and safely home. Wonderful, 50 years. Thank you Diane.
Congratulations once again to our officers and thank you, and also thank you to Diane. Thanks to the entire group for your dedication and your concern about West Bend. And with that, I will recess the Common Council over to the Licensing Board, which I will call to order and recognize that we have 27 items on the agenda tonight. Starting off with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular Licensing Board Meeting of May 6th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item two is a temporary Class B Beer License for the Life of Hope, For Hope Notes Music Festival, being held Wednesday, August 14th, 2019 at Regner Park Entertainment Area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item three is a temporary Class B Beer Wine License for the West Bend Noon Kewanas Club for the Steak in the Park, being held June 18th, 2019, from 4:30 PM through 9 o'clock PM at Regner Park Pavilion Area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item four is a temporary Class B Beer License for Immaculate Conception Parish for the Polka Mass and Raffle, being held at Immaculate Conception Parish in part of the building and gymnasium, August 17th, 2019, from 4 o'clock through 10 o'clock PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is Extension of Premise for an Outdoor Service Area and Sidewalk Cafe for Crimmins LLC, Crimmins Restaurant, 114 North Main Street.
So, this is one of the new Extension of Premises, applications under that, under the ordinance that was passed. So they, if you look at the revised map, it's the second attachment, you'll see that there's drawing that features tables that are out on the sidewalk outside of the, or not immediately adjacent to the building, but across a portion of the right-of-way from the Crimmins Restaurant. The initial application, they showed a couple of extra tables that weren't in compliance with the ordinances, but these ones have been reviewed and appear to be in compliance. So, if there's any questions, I can go through that, but just wanted to note that this is under the new ordinance, this is not just a standard Extension of Premises or Sidewalk Cafe.
Thanks Ian.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item six is Extension of Premise for the Class B Combination License for the West Bend Moose Lodge, extend outside within the fenced-in area on the West Bend Moose Lodge property, 1721 Chestnut Street, on May 25th, 2019, from 8 a.m. through 6 p.m. for the PMC Car Show, June 14th and 15th, 2019, from 10 a.m. through 3 p.m. for a brat fry, and June 23rd, 2019 for the KKKK Car Show, and October 12th, 2019 for an anniversary party.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item seven is Extension of Premise for Texas Roadhouse Holdings LLC, Texas Roadhouse 800 West Paradise Drive, for June 20th through the 23rd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item eight is Original Class B Combination License for Sponties LLC, Sponties located at 228 North 6th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item nine is Original Class B Combination TSFR, Combination License for TSFR Apple Ventures LLC, Applebee's, 2510 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Anybody sleeping yet? Third of the way done. Item 10 is a Class A Combination Liquor License for Fox Brothers Piggly Wiggly Incorporated, Piggly Wiggly number 84, located at 27, or excuse me, 2575 East Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 11 is Original Amusement Arcade License for Midstate Amusement and Games, games to be located at Eddie's Moonlighting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 12 is An Original Amusement Arcade License for Midstate Amusement Games LLC, the games will be located in Sponties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. Item 13 is a Class A Beer, Class A Liquor, Cider Only License Renewal, the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is a Class A Combination License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 15 is Our Class B Beer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 16 is Class B Combination License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 17 is Our Reserve Class B Combination License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 18, Class B Winery License Renewal for Metner Corporation and Stringer Sellers, located at 901 Sheenour Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 19, Class C Wine, Class B Beer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 20, Our Amusement Arcade License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 21, Coin and Precious Metals or Stone Dealer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 22, Secondhand Article Dealer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 23 is Secondhand Jewelry Dealer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 24 is Massage Establishment License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 25 is Approve Operators Licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And Steve, if you could handle the last two items, as I will abstain from voting on those.
Item 26, Class A Combination License Renewals for Washington Convenience Store Management, Barton Sitco, 1516 North Main Street and Wingate Creek BP, 2825 East Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion as second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed by the same side, motion carries.
Item 27, Reserve Class B Combination License Renewal for West Bend Hotel Association LLC, Hampton Inn, 1975 South 18th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion as second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries.
And be no further business before the Licensing Board, we adjourn. Thanks for paying attention everyone. It's that time of year, so if you want to avoid meetings for the Licensing Board, usually late May, early June is the time to do it. Reconvene the City West Bend Common Council for Monday, May 20th, 2019. Jump ahead to item number three, which is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion as second, any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items 4 through 28 are under the consent agenda, I'd entertain a motion on those items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Hugestür, if you could handle items 29 and 30 again, please.
Item 29, Class A Combination License Renewals for Wisconsin Convenience Store Management, Barton Sitco, 1516 North Main Street and Wingate Creek BP, 2825 East Washington Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Item 30, Reserve Class B Combination License Renewal for West Bend Hotel Associates LLC, Hampton Inn, 1975 South 18th Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries.
Thanks again Steve. Item 31 is a public hearing regarding a Junk Dealer's License for American Metal and Paper Recycling Incorporated, American Metal and Paper Recycling Incorporated, located at 935 Sheenour Drive. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item, feel free to step up to the mic.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close a public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 32 is Granting of a Junk Dealer's License for American Metal and Paper Recycling Incorporated, located at 935 Sheenour Drive.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 33 is a resolution approving the appointment of interim judge for the Midmarine Municipal Court. Ian, do you have any comment on that at all?
Jay was part of the process, I think Chris Holis is eminently suitable, she's been with Washington County and now, most recently, Waukesha County for many years, so.
The vacancy occurred as Judge Kane was elected to the bench in Ozaki County. He's going to serve through August of this year, Chris will shadow him and then take over the bench for our municipal court. So this similar resolution is being passed by all the other municipalities that have the municipal, Calmarie Municipal System. She'll have to run for reelection in April, so she's serving the resulting period of his term.
Thanks Jay and Ian.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number 34 is deferred to a future council meeting. Item 35 is Approve a Second Amendment to the Master Plan for River Shores for the remaining lands located in the River Shores Development, located east of Shore Lane and River Shores Drive, extended east. We have a presentation tonight by Development Director Mark Petrovich, good evening Mark.
Good evening. The, pardon me, the River Shores Master Plan has been approved since its inception. We have modified some of the development proposals over time, vacating a certain portion of the Riverbend Drive roadway. We have established a slightly altered land use pattern from the original approval, original master plan because of some requests regarding parking lot extensions. So we asked the developer to, before we finished up trying to develop the rest of that property, to update the master plan, to recognize those changes that were approved in the past and to show what we needed to go forward within this development. The master plan that's before you did go to the Plan Commission and was endorsed by the City Plan Commission, it essentially eliminates the unneeded road right-of-way from the original master plan that we have given up a good portion of already. It terminates River Shores Drive as a cul-de-sac and takes the allowable, remaining vacant developable land and allows it to be replatted into an additional larger parcel. We would recommend approval of the master plan and ask for your endorsement simply because this serves as the basis for a number of the developers' agreements that guide this development with Hendrick's Development Group.
Thank you Mark, any questions for Mark? I'd entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 36 is Approval of the Developers Agreement for Fleet Farm, 3725 through 3815, West Washington Street in West Bend. Again, a presentation tonight by Business and Development Specialist?
Planner.
I just made that up.
Specialist.
Jim Ranki, good evening Jim.
Good evening everyone. The agreement tonight before you is for the Fleet Farm site. Back in September of last year, the Plan Commission conditionally approved the site plan. And then in February of this year, the Common Council approved the certified survey map for that development also. As part of the conditions of both of those approvals, a developer's agreement needed to be established to complete the requirements for the overall development. The approval, or I should say, the agreement covers terms and conditions for construction of the public and private improvements, also with the terms and conditions for the utilities for the public and private utilities along with access and stormwater management. The construction and maintenance responsibilities are also included, and then also there are some payments of utility charges that have been included within the agreement. Staff would recommend approval of the agreement to the council.
Thank you Jim, any questions for Jim? I'd entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And opposed, that motion carries. Items thirty-seven and thirty-eight were flipped around, so we're going to take thirty-eight first, which is an ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the City of West Bend, for a change in the recommended land use from single-family residential to industrial for approximately sixty-two point seven acres of land, located approximately a half-mile south of Rusko Road and east of South River Road. And again, a presentation by Mark Petrovich.
Okay, the presentation is short. The lands that are, the sixty-two point seven acres, are the lands that the council approved, the annexation of which, earlier this year, the lands are recommended to be taken to an industrial use, our previous, single-family medium for this area, but items have changed over years. The lands presently are recommended for industrial use within the county's comprehensive plan and the Town of Trenton's comprehensive plan. The properties to the north and south of this are currently zoned in the, as industrial within the Town of Trenton. The lands to the west of this are zoned M two industrial, heavy industrial, in the City of West Bend, and have been since nineteen ninety-four. Pardon me. And we would ask that this land use change be made for the city's master plan.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions for Mark? I would entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item, jumping back to item number thirty-seven, is an ordinance to permanently zone approximately sixty-two point seven acres of land, located approximately a half-mile south of Rusko Road on the east side of South River Road, to M two heavy industrial district. And again, a presentation by Mark.
Thank you. As we just discussed, this land is the sixty-two point seven acres that were recently annexed. The property is extremely well-suited for large-scale industrial development. It has existing industrial lands surrounding it. There is a single-family condominium development about six hundred and sixty feet north of the main portion of this, but does adjoin at one point at extreme northwest corner at one point in this lands. This requested zoning change has basically, comes to you without a positive recommendation by the City Council. The motion to...
Plan Commission.
I'm sorry, the Plan Commission, thank you. The Plan Commission recommendation failed on a three to four vote for this, saying for the M two, but that is a recommendation to this council only. It's the council's decision on this. The industrial lands to the west were annexed, like as I mentioned before, and platted back in nineteen ninety-four with the developments starting thereafter. We basically have town lands zoned as industrial adjoining this, and city lands zoned M two industrial to the west.
Thanks, Mark. A couple gentlemen asked to speak, but before that, is there anyone that has questions for Mark? We can bring him back up as needed. Chris?
Yeah, Mark, can you explain, not only for us, but for the public too, a little bit more about the process for, if a business wanted to go in there, what's the process that we go through for screening them, looking at possible buffers, things like that between their properties?
This simply establishes the permanent zoning. Before these lands would be developed, they would have to be platted. They would have to have site plans, or actually grading plans, stormwater management plans approved for the development. At that time, the city typically looks at everything from buffers and separations, grade differentials, and the rest, and picks a development pattern for it. And as the lands develop, individual site plans are approved, again, looking at all those items as they come before the Plan Commission and council.
Now, I'll add to that, that currently we utilize the Urban Design Manual, which is kind of the rulebook that the Plan Commission uses when approving or critiquing a development. I believe that this park is, will be large enough that it would have its own set of design standards, design manual that'll be put together, assuming the process continues forward. Again, as Mark said, this is really purely just discussing the zoning. It doesn't get into, we'll have a chance to vet out exactly what those design standards will be from, again, as Mark mentioned, setbacks, and what uses go where, and landscaping requirements, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Any other questions for Mark?
Yeah. Once a property is developed, assuming it gets rezoned as M two, remedies such as the municipal code's nuisance laws would apply to the new development, correct? In other words, they couldn't come in and create noxious smells or extreme amounts of noise.
There are performance standards for most of those items that you mentioned within our zoning code, and we routinely address those upon issues anytime we get a complaint.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Gentlemen, anybody interested in stepping up to the mic? As I mentioned, thanks for coming up and requesting time. This isn't the public hearing. That was done on May seventh at the Plan Commission. However, historically, we...
Can I just have Mark clarify something? He said that...
Just let us know who you, your name and your address.
Patrick Falkowski. I live at High Ridge, five-two-three-four High Ridge Trail in the subdivision.
And before you go, I'd just like to remind you what we discussed. You've got a couple of minutes. This isn't necessarily a public hearing, but we're happy to hear what's on your mind.
Okay, so can I ask him a question, or is that part of my time?
Go for it.
You stated that the land is currently zoned industrial. Am I correct in saying it's zoned agricultural right now? Their tax bills are agricultural, not industrial.
Incorrect. They are zoned industrial. The use that they are taxed under, because they are existing agricultural fields, they are taxed at an agricultural rate, but they are zoned industrial and could develop by right as industrial.
Are they M one or M two?
The city, or the county, or I'm sorry, the town has only one industrial zoning.
And what is that? Just industrial?
I don't know the exact designation, but it's one industrial classification. And it doesn't necessarily correlate to the cities.
Okay, thank you. Just I'd like to clarify for some people. I've talked to almost all of you on the phone this weekend. Our subdivision is thirty-seven single-family homes, ranging in value from anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to four-hundred-plus-thousand dollars. We are not your typical condo association that you may anticipate. There is no current reason M two zoning should be in this proximity of our subdivision, or any subdivision in the city. Mark states that there's currently industrial surrounding this property. Yes, there is industrial to the west, across River Road, across the highway. There is no industrial buildings. My wife sent pictures to some of you guys. And there's no industrial buildings near us right now. There's nothing developed over there unless you go all the way over to G, where there, I believe, is some industrial in the Town of Trenton. M two has no place or next to residential, so I'm going to get back online here. Mark, from the developing, Department of Development, is stating that rezoning is a good fit due to proximity to other industrial zoning, and the Town of Trenton's 2020 plan showing industrial use, and the county showing industrial use. I would like to point out that the City of West Bend's 2020 plan states single-family resident, along with all the other adjoining properties. Both inside, both of these properties, ours and the property that they're dealing with, are inside of the West Bend's urban service boundaries, which means they're making the decisions for most of these things anyways. The mission statement of the Department of Development is to promote and provide a positive, balanced approach towards economic and community growth through proactive, efficient, expedient, and innovative decision-making. Well, I'm not sure if innovative is placing heavy industrial next to residential, but I'm not following that logic there. Another statement that the department makes is their vision statement is a unified and innovative approach to economic and community development in a timely manner that is consistent with community standards. There is no standards of us putting M two industrial next to residential districts of any sort. And when we have, there's been conflict with the metal craft industry and putting residential next to them in the vice, in the opposite order. I'd also like to state the difference between M two and M one clearly states in the zoning. M two is manufacturing uses that may produce external effects such as noise, dust, smoke, odor, and vibration. M one clearly states physical characteristics that are not detrimental to the surrounding area or the community as a whole by reason of noise, dust, smoke, odor, traffic vibration, and physical appearance. My wife made a rendering of what picture looks like with a Krelkamp warehouse behind our house, or another business from the industrial park she's superimposed on that back lot. I don't think the physical appearance is appealing to any of us. I also think there's a direct effect on our values of our properties, which comes into play when we start talking about legal issues. There's plenty of court precedent that says if development through poor planning leads to property value losses or your enjoyment of your property, there's potential for litigation. I have talked to Alan Markowitz, a lawyer down Milwaukee, who was in past history dealt with the City of West Bend when Walmart was developed. And at this point, I feel like we're, if this goes through against the Planning Commission's advice not to put it through, you're basically forcing us into the possibility of only using litigation as our only way out of this. I did do one little last fact check, and our subdivision currently adds up to about eleven million dollars in assessed value. So we do have a lot to lose. It's not just because we don't want it there. We're not against industry. We're against M two zoning. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming forward. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Nathan Chinaman. I live at five-two-five-eight High Ridge Trail. My property, via my backyard, would be about two-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the corner of this proposed change. I prepared a letter because I didn't want to think off the cuff that I'd like to read. Mr. Mayor and City Alderman, thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I'm standing here before you today because I want to stop two particular ordinances that directly affect my neighborhood. First, I want to start by stating that I am not against encouraging any industry in West Bend. This is something that I've been on both sides of. However, I feel that we need to go about this the right way, and mixing heavy industrial next to residential is not that right way. Res zoning the land south of our residence does not make sense and should not be done. I sent you all a letter this past week, and I would like to add a short story about something I remembered. Sorry. During my morning walk in our quiet neighborhood, we, meaning my family and many of my neighbors, have been very stressed lately, and these possible zoning changes, excuse me, and these possible zoning changes have been at the forefront of that stress. On the night after the May seventh Planning Commission meeting, when I was still quite upset, my ten-year-old, who's present here tonight, asked me what was wrong. I tried explaining our situation to her about how the city wants to change land next to us and use it for heavy industry. By making this heavy industry, they could put any number of things that would make a lot of noise, light, and smell. My daughter is a very quick study and responded almost immediately that her bedroom is the closest room of our house to this land. She then followed up by saying, Dad, that noise is going to keep me awake at night, and I need to get my sleep if I want a good job. Tell them they can't do this. I was taken back in that moment and couldn't understand why our elected officials can't understand something so simple that a ten-year-old gets immediately. Again, I plead with you to keep this land zoned residential as designated in the 2020 plan. At the very least, if you can't do this, please at the very least, keep it zoned M one.
Thank you. Thank you. One point of clarification, we can open up the council comments. It's really technically not a rezoning. It's a permanent zoning. It's already currently zoned industrial. So it's really not a land use change. Somebody could walk in tomorrow into the township and apply for and get approved in industrial use, including the twenty acres immediately south of your properties. Just want to make sure that everyone understands that point. I'll open up to the council for any questions or comments or action. Chris?
I guess I want to speak because I both, I really understand what you're going through. I live in Rolling Hill subdivision. Metal Craft Building is two houses away from me. I remember years ago, too, when issues came about, when houses were starting to get built there, and the concerns that that came about. Granted, that's a different scenario and different reasoning why houses are being, getting built there, but I understand it because as issues come up, which are, by the way, very, very far in between, the city has done a great job with handling those issues. To me, and I'm saying this as somebody who probably lives closer to industrial than anybody else up here, we have not had a problem with it. We really haven't. And I know, I know you feel that it's going to be right in your backyard, but man, guys, you have a lot more of a buffer there than I do. And we just have never had an issue. So I, it's not that I don't understand. It's just that I live it. I live it every day. And I just don't, I just don't understand, or maybe can't fathom, a scenario where, one, it's an issue, and, two, the city doesn't do their due diligence through the Planning Commission and every other actions that we have to make sure that there is a proper, I guess it would be, you know, whether it's landscaping, buffering, or anything like that, to make sure that there isn't issues for you guys. And at the same token, we've been talking about the need for industrial for quite a while. Being that I have industrial park in my district, I have businesses that want to expand, and they can't expand within the City of West Bend. We don't have enough space for them. I have one who I bring up all the time that tells me that, you know, when they're ready to expand, they're going to go to Jackson. And for our taxpayers, which I understand you guys are not, but for our taxpayers, that matters to me. It's important to have that industrial increment. So again, I apologize. It's probably not the answer that you want to hear, but with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any final questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thanks for coming out, folks. Item thirty-nine is a resolution approving a certified survey map for seventeen-foot-wide street right-of-way dedication for West Washington Street, a presentation by Jim Ranky.
Good evening. This certified, or this resolution is to acknowledge a seventeen-foot-wide dedication or right-of-way for West Washington Street. Currently, there is a highway easement where the road itself lays, and this actually just changes the ownership from an easement to the city owning the right-of-way for this stretch of land for the Highway thirty-three or West Washington. The purpose of the CSM is to combine the three properties that exist out there for the redevelopment of that property.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Alderman Hugaster, could you please handle item number forty for me as well?
Item forty, ordinance to amend existing planned unit development overlay district over the existing B one community business district to allow for approval of a site plan to include reduced setbacks and other design exceptions for the development of this property for a retail store, sixteen oh five to eighteen oh one South Main Street. Jim, you're talking on this?
Yes, I am. The ordinance tonight is actually to acknowledge a zoning amendment. Back in May of this year, the Plan Commission unanimously approved, or recommended approval of the amendment to the existing PUD overlay for the Pick and Save site. The development on the far north end is being torn down and then redeveloped. The setback for this already has been reduced. So typically, there's a forty-two-foot setback. We're proposing an eight-foot setback and a ten-foot setback for the new building that's going to be replacing that existing building. So this is just acknowledging that change that the Plan Commission approved for the site plan.
Any questions for Jim?
Make a motion.
Sorry.
Just a quick question. Isn't that fairly close to what they've got now for setbacks?
Exactly. That's why, with it being slightly different, we want... That's why with it being slightly different, we wanted the council and the Plan Commission to acknowledge the change that we have for that redevelopment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Steve. Item 41, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, parent 1, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding a purchase agreement.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie?
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalli.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kist.
Aye.
We are in closed session.
It's one of the only ways that I'm concerned.